We will call to order the October 20th of 2021 Regular Board Session. Thank you. So I'd like to call the October 20th, 2021 Board Meeting to order. Remind everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or a motion and second for any action item. Thank you. I'll ask each Commissioner to please respond with a "here" when I call out their name. Commissioner Bagnell?
I'm here. I'm having trouble muting and unmuting for some reason, but I'm here.
Commissioner Doan?
Here.
Commissioner Duggan?
Uh, here. Trouble with my mute.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Here.
All right. Thank you. Well, we'll begin this evening with reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff.
Well, thank you, and I'm going to see how well my navigation skills work here. So while, look at that. Wow. All right. So I hope that's not working just for me. Then I'll be embarrassed. Um, so, uh, Portland Crypto-Spiridium results for the month of September 2021. The Portland Water Bureau reported no crypto-spiridium osis detections in water samples collected from the Bull Run Headworks. Complete results of Portland's crypto-spiridium monitoring are posted on the city's website. Uh, October Talkin' Water. So as a reminder, um, we have a couple Talkin' Water Virtual Forum events, uh, this month. Uh, October 26th, next week, uh, the Future of Water in Washington County. So, uh, this is a follow-up to a radio interview that, uh, myself and Joel Carey did. Um, and just talking, uh, with, um, our, our customers as well as, uh, other interested people about the, uh, water supply, uh, in Washington County. Um, we've partnered with, we have our partners on the call, uh, for that one. So if questions come up about Hillsborough or Beaverton, or they, they can speak to their own, uh, issues there. So, uh, we've partnered a bit on this one. And then October 28th, uh, Winter Irrigation System Prep. Uh, we'll, you know, give a, a little, uh, update to interested customers on that one. And, uh, as a reminder, these are recorded, so they're available to customers to watch, uh, later too. Um, and registration information is available, um, by our district website. Uh, so the AMO Conference, uh, the Associated Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies. Um, I attended the Executive Management Conference, October 3rd through the 6th. And, uh, I thought I'd provide some of the major takeaways, uh, from that conference. Um, it was, uh, I think it was a bit therapeutic frankly for, uh, uh, the, the folks in attendance. Um, there were a number of panel discussions and presentations on COVID-related challenges. And, uh, at least from my perspective, it was nice to feel like, uh, there was some company there in, in the challenges we're, we're all facing. But all our face, uh, everyone that spoke and everyone that I spoke to in private conversations, uh, even separate from the panel discussions, that they're facing significant divides among staff over vaccination and work-from-home policies. Uh, for some agencies, it's more challenging than others. Um, but it, it is, uh, it, it's, there were some pretty interesting stories that went along with that. Uh, there, everybody was facing, uh, threats of staff resignations. Um, you've heard everything called the Great Resignation, um, right now. Um, there's lots of threats, uh, and, um, but what most places are experiencing the threats, but not actual anybody leaving. Um, many have mandatory vaccination policies, uh, and, uh, some have lost staff due to non-compliance. Um, so their approach to, it's, it was interesting how different places took different approaches to it. Um, but the results were kind of the same, um, in terms of, of how effective things were. Um, all are dealing with, uh, non-paying customers and looking at different ways to manage them. So, uh, uh, some are still in a situation where they're not doing shut-offs. Um, and, uh, they are in a, in a bit of a panic over it. Um, and, uh, trying to, uh, deal with the, the customers that haven't paid, especially since this all began. So, uh, we're a little ahead of, frankly, compared to many that I heard and, and that spoke and that I spoke to. Uh, we're a little bit ahead on that one. Um, DEI work, uh, was a significant theme and, uh, is considered critical work to be done in the industry. Uh, several people actually pointed to, uh, the COVID challenges and tying, uh, DEI work to some of those challenges that, that they saw. Um, and, uh, a lot, there was a lot of presentations on, uh, the opportunities and how, how different entities have gone about, um, addressing, uh, DEI in their, uh, workplace or in their, uh, agency. Uh, one of the, one of the topics was childcare. Um, it's a growing problem. And, uh, it was interesting to hear Salt Lake City is building childcare onsite. Obviously, they're a pretty big entity, um, and, and can afford to do that. But, uh, there were, uh, a few others that spoke that were talking about, um, you know, that they may consider something like this in the future. And then, uh, a, uh, lengthy discussion on cybersecurity. Um, but the, the main, uh, presenter on that was, uh, the folks from Boston involved in their ransomware attack. Um, and, uh, it, bottom line, the, it, we have, there's significant threats, um, to cybersecurity, and they are growing. Uh, all the experts that spoke about it, we're talking about the, the growing numbers. We've heard that from our own, uh, IT Director. Um, and, uh, hackers, this was one that was surprising. Hackers are generating approximately 100 million a month in various ransomware attacks globally. So, um, I really didn't understand the magnitude of that when, uh, they were saying that. Um, they, the, in the, in the city of Boston's case, they found embedded code. Um, and, uh, on a, on a computer that the language was set to Russian. The default settings were to Russian because that user, the, the woman, was from Russia. And, uh, so, um, they, that's really what saved them because they were then able to, uh, get access to the code. And they found in the code language itself that if these defaults were set to Russian, um, it basically was, it's set to, you know, don't infect that computer. Um, and as a result, in Boston's case, they then got access to the encryption to get rid of all of it, all, all the infection. It also led them to the, the folks that perpetrated it, um, and that were located in Ukraine. Um, ransomware takes a system offline for at least two weeks, uh, even in best-case scenarios. Um, and one of the things that they made clear, it's almost certain every entity will be attacked and really need to be prepared to answer the question of paying the ransom or not. Um, they, there was a lot of discussion about that. Um, do you pay the ransom, um, or not? Uh, I, we, I've certainly talked to, uh, Tim Boland, our IT Director, about this. Um, I think we're in as best a situation as we could be that we wouldn't have to pay it. But it would certainly impact us, but we, with our backup systems and how we have everything set, if, if we were to ever get hit with this, I think we'd be in a good position to not have to pay it. Um, many recommended tools to minimize risk, uh, and most of which TVWD has already implemented or we're in the process of implementing. Um, and one of them being this multi-factor authentication that I know, uh, Tim has reached out to all of you about. And then, uh, the biggest risk is people. And, and it's people clicking on links in emails. Uh, so you get an email. Um, it looks like it's, frankly, there, there's been a lot where they look like they're from me to other staff. And you had, you actually have to look at who, where it's from to realize it didn't come from me. And, uh, but many of our own staff have gotten emails from me, or claim to be me, and it's not. And so it's that kind of stuff to look out for. Um, and don't click on those links unless you're absolutely certain. Uh, the other, uh, places, uh, where things are happening is with USB devices. Um, people bringing in an infected USB device, plugging it into their system here, and it, uh, basically gets into the system. So, um, but we've put, uh, a system in place to even prevent that. Um, and the last one was, uh, it was a big surprise to me. Um, the new thing is, uh, they know, they're, they're just monitoring, uh, email. You're, the, I, they'll get into a system like ours and they'll just monitor the email traffic. And what they're looking for is, um, who's paying the bills and who's sending bills? And, um, they will then mimic the sender of the bill. Um, make it look exactly like that and, but also somehow basically say, oh, we've changed our, you know, whatever, but it, it, it's literally addressed to, you know, uh, like, like it's their, you know, hi Debbie, this is so-and-so. So it sounds and looks like it's coming from the person that you've engaged with. And what happened, I, I can't remember the city. I might have been Chicago. Um, but they paid millions of dollars in bills before they realized that that money was going to, um, and, and, uh, so that was, that, that's kind of a new one. So, uh, those are the things, uh, that we're watching out for. Uh, and then, uh, my last thing here is, uh, turning this over to Andrew Caulstrom. Uh, he's our Customer Service Manager, and he's going to present the Safety Minute and Department Report this means. So Andrew, it's all yours.
Great. Thank you, Tom. All right. Well, good evening, uh, President Sanders and Board of Commissioners. I'll do the Safety Moment first. So the Safety Moment tonight is about, um, earthquake safety. And this is a reminder to, uh, get ready to shake out. Tomorrow's the big, um, International Shakeout Day. And, uh, it's a earthquake drill. If you go to shakeout.org, it'll give you more information. But very timely since that's tomorrow. So again, tomorrow is the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill. Just a reminder, um, earthquakes can happen anytime and almost anywhere. And injuries are caused by, from earthquakes or from falling or flying objects. And it's really important to practice to be safe. So join people who are millions who are practicing earthquake safety with the Great Shakeout tomorrow. All right. Just a little bit of background on earthquakes. Uh, earthquakes happen all over the world, but especially along edges of the earth's tectonic plates, such as the west coast of, uh, North America, where we are. And here in the United States, the United States Geological Survey estimates that, uh, the shaking intensity and frequency is highest in, uh, California, Oregon, Washington, Alaska, Hawaii, um, the central US and South Carolina. So if you look at the red there in the west coast, that's us. And, uh, as you well know from, um, WWSP presentations, we're in a seismically active, um, area. So when should you protect yourself? Well, when you, you feel the, uh, earthquake shaking or when you get a, an earthquake alert. And, um, I know Kerry's talked about this before. There's a, um, early warning system, you know, the west coast of the United States, shakealert.org. Um, you can sign up to get alerts. Or when you do an earthquake drill, such as, uh, the Great Shakeout tomorrow. So what do you do? Uh, well, basically it's drop, cover, and hold on. So if a table or desk are nearby, you can see the little, um, graphic, uh, image here. There's a video on what you do. Again, drop over you are on your hands and knees. Cover your head and neck with, uh, one arm and hand, and then crawl underneath the table or desk if you can for additional shelter. And then hold on to, uh, the shelter with one hand and keep covering your head or neck with the other hand. So what do you do if, um, there is nothing to get under? Well, it's this, it's a similar procedure. It's, uh, drop, cover, and hold on. But you, again, in the hold-on part, you need to use, uh, both, both hands to, um, hold on to your head and neck. And you can see the image there of what someone's doing. Something I want to highlight here is, um, really interesting is, um, from the, um, information I was looking at is adapting for your situation. And it was nice to, nice to see, um, uh, instructions for a range of, of abilities. And, um, this is something that, um, I saw internally, uh, TVWD sent out on earthquake safety. Um, but, you know, if you're, if it's possible for you to, if you have mobility or if you're using a cane, um, or if you're, uh, using a walker or using a wheelchair. So if you can't get back up by yourself, um, don't drop to the ground. If you have a wheelchair walker, lock the wheels. Um, bend and cover your head and neck with your arms and hands. And you can also hold on to a book or other object over your head, over your, over your hand. Um, instruct others how to assist you. And I put in the, in the PowerPoint, there's a nice link on more guidance for, uh, persons with disabilities and other, um, access and functional needs. So, uh, more information, go to shakeout.org. And again, drop, cover, and hold on. So I'll pause there for a moment, see if there are any questions. I'm not hearing any. Um, oh, good, good point, Commissioner Duggan. It's at 10:20, 10:21 AM. Yes, 10:21 on 10:21. All right. So I'm going to transition now to the, um, uh, to the Department Report. And tonight's Department Report is, uh, modernization, something you've heard, uh, Tom say many times. But it's, uh, tonight's going to be an update on CIS and talk a little bit about AMI as well. So, um, I first wanted to go at the highest level to, uh, District Vision, Mission, and Values. And you'll see why in a moment. But, uh, looking through our values, uh, definitely they apply to, uh, modernization efforts, certainly reliability, um, stewardship, and excellence. So, looking at, uh, CIS and AMI, um, these are really foundational upgrades for TVWD. Of course, we're in CIS right now, and they both address what we call the meter-to-cash cycle. And this is in, in total, it's, these are the processes where everything from enrolling customers and maintaining appropriate account data, uh, reading, uh, meters, billing our customers, receiving payments, uh, addressing, uh, collections issues, and providing refunds and applying the payments to the proper accounting ledger. And really good source for these implementations was, uh, uh, Water Resources Foundation report a couple of years ago about planning and implementing CIS and AMI projects. And I know we've used this extensively, um, when we were, uh, ramping up on the CIS project. But this is, we're modern, uh, we're modernizing the meter-to-cash cycle at TVWD. Uh, CIS and, and AMI are really foundational to doing this. Um, and getting back to the mission, vision, values, these upgrades, I think, certainly support fulfillment of, um, our current mission, vision, and values. So moving on to CIS. Um, again, it's been a while since we've talked, but this is the Customer Information System Project. It's a partnership project with, um, Clean Water Services. And the purpose is to replace the legacy billing system with an off-the-shelf CIS. And we, we do have one that we selected a while back. It's, uh, Open Smart Flex. And another benefit of this project is continuing to build on the collaborator, collaborative relationship that we do have, uh, between TVWD and Clean Water Services. So, uh, I'm not going to go through all the key project objectives, but did want to highlight a few. Certainly as applies to modernization, uh, addressing both current and projected business needs. Um, and also, we'll come back to this later, as number five is, um, providing greater integration with key business systems. All right. So some of the key ingredients we have in this project, certainly the, the partnership, but not just between Clean Water Services and TVWD, also with our CIS vendor, Open, and also a professional services firm that's helping us in the implementation, that's AAC Utility Partners. Uh, I have an underline on the organizational support and prioritization. And, um, as Tom's indicated, the, the priorities are the WWSP, CIS, and of course, um, ongoing operations here at TVWD. But, um, top priorities are the WLMIT and CIS, in addition to all the other daily work we need to do to, uh, support customers. Project oversight is, we've got a, a governance structure that has, of course, you. We've got an executive committee from both agencies. Uh, we've got an oversight committee. And, um, they can provide, uh, oversight and guidance to the core team. And one of the people on the, um, Oversight Committee is Paul Matthews. Really fortunate to have him on the team. Strong staff engagement. This is certainly the case. We had a Customer Service Department meeting this week, and, uh, we had a demo of, um, some functionality of the new system and a lot of questions from staff, which is great to see. And finally, external expertise, and this is AAC Utility Partners, um, as well as someone from, uh, Everest on the data conversion side. But we have a lot of support for this project, and we certainly, um, appreciate your support. This is a slide that kind of gives you an idea of the project work that's been completed to date. And, um, in sort of the blue are some of the, the milestones we've achieved so far. And this is, uh, put together by, uh, Heather Ann, our business analyst. And she put in here also some, some other milestones, including, um, the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic and the Delta variant. So if you go left or right, we, uh, in 2019, we were developing our requirements in the RFP package. Um, Commissioner Doan will remember, we had the demos in the boardroom in the fall, in October of 2019, uh, two years ago. It's hard to believe. Um, and right before we selected a vendor, uh, that's about the time COVID hit, or about the time we selected the vendor, and then we went into, um, our, uh, negotiations. And then in the fall of 20, after we had a contract, and in the fall of 20, we had the kickoff. And then we launched into, uh, planning and analysis, functional workshops, uh, business process documentation, configuration work with Open. Um, and now we're in, uh, we're testing end-to-end processes. But the, the point of having the, the COVID and the Delta here is that it's been almost entirely a, a, a remote project for everybody. We had a brief moment in time before Delta hit where we had, um, members of the core team get together. But, uh, so far, it's been really entirely remote, including with our vendor and our, uh, project, uh, implementation services firm. So it's been a challenge. Um, everyone stepped up to the, to the challenge, and we've done the best we can. We hope that things clear out enough that when we get into training, that'll be largely onsite. But we're also making contingency plans if that's not the case. So I'm going to move on now to, um, give you some, I, some, a sample of really functional highlights from, uh, the project team. And you'll see this graphic on a number of slides. This, this gives you the, just the implementation timeline, not the selection process, but starting in November of, of 2020. And then on the far end, uh, looking at Go Live, around May is what we're projecting right now. And then the stabilization, that's the, um, the four months post-Go Live. So planning and analysis, design and construction, where you see the dotted line and testing and training. That's where we are right now. And then there's a lot of work to do before we're getting into Go Live. But the, the core team had some, uh, feedback on things that they were seeing in the configuration. They really liked, um, uh, non-technical loss usage exemptions. They, they think this will really reduce manual work of, uh, scanning meter reads for rechecks. Uh, stop service, and this could be kind of in the move-in, move-out. Uh, automatically triggering meter read workflows, which is really an improvement for both customers and operations. Exceptions, this is a big one, um, for, uh, billing exception process. Moving from paper to a paperless is really going to be a tremendous process improvement with a lot of automation. Bill presentation, the bills will automatically attach to the customer record in the system. And then finally, for, uh, meter changeouts, the work orders will automatically close after the work's complete. And field, uh, comments will automatically, automatically populate for the CSRs. Um, and just to let you know, we'll talk about this in a moment. But the work orders are going to be processed largely through our, our CMMS, um, which is City Works. Uh, but there's an integration between, um, Smart Flex, our CIS, and, um, City Works. So, uh, next slide is just a, giving you an idea of that we are working on the portal right now. And we do think that the new self-service customer portal is going to provide, um, additional ways for customers connect with TVWD. Um, there's a lot of work going on to this, into this right now. And we'd really like to, um, provide you a presentation, um, to give you a demo of the, of the portal in the very near future. More functional highlights from the project team. Um, the, similar to what was seen in the demos, really user-friendly interface in the backend system. This is a screen clip from the primary, um, CSR screen showing account information. And you can see different colors of, um, of, uh, actions and status. So green is, uh, completed or paid bills and payments. And red is, uh, outstanding, outstanding payments, and blue is for requests. And then Open has a schematic where something is filled in, means completed, and hollow is pending or active. It's really very intuitive and, uh, really easy to use. Uh, some of the work ahead, and this is really between now and, uh, Go Live. Testing, training, and, and Go Live prep. So starting with, uh, testing, just to give you an idea of some of the challenges we've had, um, during the implementation is, um, data conversion has taken longer than we thought, but we've, that's on track right now. Um, we're now into the integration testing, and that's, um, that's our challenge at the moment. But, you know, we're just, I think it'll probably go back and forth during the implementation on which is the, um, the critical path. So we are in the, in integration testing right now. We are starting the Build Parallel Testing. I know Commissioner Doan, you've highlighted that before, which we really appreciate. And pretty soon we'll be doing report testing and, um, also stress and performance testing of the system. In the training category, um, we're working on the, the training schedule right now. And one thing we learned from a CSW, Customer Service Week conference, um, a while back when we were learning about best practices for the implant, these implementations, was to really invest in developing the training materials for your users. And there was one utility that was a little larger than, than us, um, in, in the United States. And their, their presentation said that they had someone working on their training full-time before Go Live. And we really took that to heart. And we have someone from AAC who's entirely dedicated to helping develop our training program. And so she's creating, uh, job aids, how-to guides, videos, um, instructor materials, because we're going to be providing a lot of the actual, actual delivery of the training for, uh, our staff. And another thing I put in this, um, category was also creating, um, outreach materials for customers. And on the, by the way, on the communication side, we do have strong engagement of our communication staff and also from, um, Clean Water Services. And they're already thinking about how to, um, work with customers as we approach Go Live. Go Live prep, um, the final configuration of the system. We'll be developing a production support plan. Um, there may be policy documents or decisions. Uh, we'll have the customer outreach on the transition. We'll need to spend, uh, quite a bit of effort preparing the call center for the transition. And, uh, collections, I put in there addressing collections because, and I'll talk about this more in a moment. Um, I just want to highlight that proactively now in advance of Go Live. We'll have our cut-over checklist, and then before we go live, we'll have, uh, several mock Go Lives. So a lot of work between now and Go Live. And then I wanted to have a note here about the implementation schedule. So you may remember when we published our RFP for the vendor, we were projecting, uh, based on feedback from our consultant, 18 months to Go Live. Um, we had a We had a vendor that thought they could do it sooner. And we agreed in the contract, 14 months to go-live. As it turns out, we got into the project, it was overly aggressive, we did a reassessment, and we're now back to extending that by three months. We're at 17 months, we're faster than we originally projected. And we're finalizing the cost for that extension. And one thing that Paul's continually emphasized, we've had these discussions, is in addition to the triple constraint of scope, schedule, budget, it's also the fourth constraint, which is quality. So we always want to think about quality when we're looking at go-live. And we'll, we'll go-live when we're ready, and as Paul said, not a day, not a day before we are. All right, so looking at some of the risks, I wanted to give you a sample of some of the risks to manage. Definitely the timeline, and we did extend it, it's still tight. We're looking on some mitigations on a couple of things right now. Integrations at the moment is behind schedule. We do have integrations with about 13 systems, including Paymentis, two financial systems, us and Clean Water Services, City Works, and other systems here at TBWD. And that's turning, oops, pardon me, that's turning out to be a lot of work. But we're, we're working on mitigations to, to the speed of that work. Data conversion, as I mentioned before, it's on track, but we're going to want to keep a close eye on that. And COVID-19 impacts, you know, we're not sure exactly what that's going to look like over the next year. But we are preparing for either scenario for training, whether it's onsite, or remote, or a hybrid. And finally, I wanted to highlight collections. One thing that we learned from a C S Week conference when we're looking at best practices for these implementations a while back, is that typically, when a utility gets ready to go-live, they will look at either reducing or even freezing their collections activities by go-live, and then in the, what's called the hyper-care period. And that's, that could be maybe a month, it could be more. That's, that's when you're, you're transitioning to the system, and you're getting a lot of customer calls. You want to clear the decks, and after you pull out of that, you start to resume your collections efforts. We're in a little different situation with our COVID-era arrearses. And there are a lot of moving pieces that we're addressing internally. Not just the resumption of shut-offs, but also the various assistance streams. There's a, there's a lot to figure out between now and the next couple of months, but we're up to the task. But it's something I'm highlighting for everybody. We just want to be very intentional about how we're addressing collections relative to go-live and stabilization. So the last thing I have here on CIS is I wanted to put some things on your radar. Number one, I'd like to provide more frequent briefings now that we're on the glide path heading towards closer to go-live. Be nice to get in a regular cadence with you. Top of the list would be an update on schedule and costs. We're going to be working with Clean Water Services, not just on some of the outstanding items from the implementation IGA, but also we'll need a new operations IGA between the two agencies. Like to provide you a product overview, a demo of the customer portal. Will be, need to talk more about collections during go-live and stabilization to keep that on your radar. And of course, the go-live preparations, what that means, and what that means for customers and customer communication and outreach. So I know that's probably a lot to go through fairly quickly, but I'm going to pause there before going into a couple AMI slides and see if you have any questions. Oh, thank you, Commissioner Bagnell, I just saw your, your comment about CMMS.
Hi Andrew, this is Todd Sanders. And I probably speak for everybody, I don't say that often, but boy, howdy, this is exciting. It's great to see, it's great to see that you are closing in on the go-live date. And I think we're all very appreciative of your effort here, your team's effort here. Because this is going to be a well-deserved and a well-needed upgrade for the CIS system.
This is Dick, you're here.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Bagnell, again, I just, I am so excited to hear about the integration with CMMS. Because I went to work for TBWD in the year 2000, and that was an issue then, that work orders were not connected in any way between the customer billing system and the operations folks. And it, that's always been a very manual process and fraught with problems. It's, it's just a delight to hear there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
This is, this is Jim Doan. I was really impressed with the fact that our team, both TBWD and Clean Water Services, if they'd have been there with the Portland transition, asking the questions that, that weren't asked, then perhaps some administrators would have kept their jobs. But I was just really impressed with the level of detail and how far ahead people were thinking. It's, I'm just awestruck by what a, what an awesome team that we've got. And I'm absolutely certain that this is going to be a real success. And we, we need to do something for our staff when we, when we actually make the transition. This is as big a deal as surviving COVID-19 and the Delta variant, it really is.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Doan, appreciate the words, which I'll pass on to the team. And just want to say that we, we really appreciated that you were there and part of the demos when we had those onsite. Well, I think that's probably all the questions at the moment. I'm going to transition now to a few slides on AMI or advanced metering infrastructure. And I know it's been a while since we talked about this. I've got two slides that were reviewed from the budget workshops, number two, workshop number two. And so what is, what is AMI? AMI is a system that collects real-time or time-differentiated consumption information. And what it would mean for a utility such as TBWD is, rather than collecting one or two readings per month, an AMI system, smart meters, if you want to think about it that way, is configurable to take meter data multiple times per day. Some of the benefits of an AMI system are improved consumption information for customers, automating the meter reading process, reducing estimated reads, which is definitely is impactful to both staff and customers. Reducing truck rolls to investigate reads, improved leak detection. And that's a, that's a really big one for customers, is that they can track that loss much earlier so they don't end up with a large bill for that loss. Reduced theft, and Tom's highlighted many times the importance of AMI in the, in system water loss and distribution information. The next slide here is the AMI initiative at TBWD. This will be an integral component of modernizing the meter-to-cash cycle, as I mentioned earlier. The purpose of the AMI initiative at TBWD will be to provide innovative technologies, AMI, to support the needs and expectations of both customers and operations. And I wanted to highlight, we've got a slide here in a moment, that the new CIS, the Open SmartFlex, is an integrated solution with AMI-required meter data management, which is called MDM. Functionality that's built into the product. And finally, AMI is one path, it's not the only path, but it is one path for TBWD to potentially achieve implementation of monthly billing, which was one of the recommendations from the Rate Advisory Committee several years ago. So where are we in AMI right now? Well, it was included in the district initiatives, in the adopted, adopted budget, and subsequent communications that you've received. The TBWD is currently pursuing external funding to advanced AMI. And to the benefit of both customers and operations, there is a resolution in the packet for one grant opportunity. And I know Tom is very keen on AMI, excuse me. And I thought maybe, I know he heard some comments about AMI at the Amaw Conference. And if there's anything you can share, either in this meeting or subsequent meeting, as Tom, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, so that was an issue that, that came up. That it seemed like most of the entities I talked to either were in the process of installing AMI or had already fully gone to AMI. And I got to hear stories of where it went well, and stories where it didn't go so well. Which frankly, those are the ones I want to hear, because I want to make sure in our journey, we don't repeat that. So this is something that a lot of, especially the larger water utilities are all headed towards for a number of reasons, all of which that Andrew laid out. And including the ability to detect backflow was, is a big one, that a lot of folks are, not to mention just being able to provide our customers more real-time information, give them better control, and get control over water loss. So yeah, the, short of it is, is the industry's headed there fairly aggressively now across the country.
Great, thanks, Tom. Last bullet I have here is about staffing and AMI. So obviously, we're in very early stages right now. But our conservation program is really going to provide a staffing role for this initiative. And this is our conservation technician, Steve Carper. And conservation really has them being involved with AMI. There's a, there's synergy with other modernization efforts we're doing, particularly CIS, that Customer Service is leading, to benefit customers and other departments at TBWD, as well as Clean Water Services. But it's also consistent with the work on the AMI business case. And Steve provided a lot of leadership as we worked on, on that piece of the early AMI work in the, in the previous biennium. So we're lucky that he's, he's part of this team and can be part of AMI going forward. So last slide I have is on Open SmartFlex. So this is just a schematic provided by Open, this is our CIS. And they called it a holistic CIS solution. CIS is in the middle. What these acronyms are, left to right, CRM is Customer Relationship Management. MWFM is Mobile Workforce Management, OSS is Operational Support System, and MDM is Meter Data Management. So for our implementation for CIS, the two that we have are CIS and the Customer Relationship Management. But since this is a holistic solution, essentially, MDM is, in a sense, already part of the product. So obviously, if we went that route where, where we needed MDM in AMI, we can, we can turn it on, but we'd have to have a negotiation and an agreement with Open. But the good news is there'd be one less integration point, in that you wouldn't have a new integration between the MDM system and the CIS. So that's a, that's one of the benefits of Open SmartFlex that we highlighted during the selection process. So that's what I have for the department report tonight. And if you have any additional questions, please let me know.
Well, it sounds like you've given a very thorough presentation, Andrew. I'm impressed with how many acronyms you know so well.
Thank you.
All right. With that, then, we're going to move on to the next step, which is Commissioner Communications and Reports of Meetings Attended. So the Commissioners will now report on recent meetings attended, and we'll begin with Commissioner Bagnell.
It's always good to be right at the head of the alphabet. So I have several meetings this time to report. On the 17th of September, I met with the CEO, the CFO, and Commissioner Duggan for a finance committee, kind of early update on budget trends that the staff is keeping a close eye on. On the 5th of October, we had a boardwork session where we got the update on the WLMIT water supply project, board policy revisions, new holidays, and an update on district initiatives. On the 8th, I attended the Barney Reservoir Joint Operating Committee and JWC Joint Water Commission meeting, where we got plant and budget updates. And then tonight's meeting with regular board business. It's for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagnell. Commissioner Doan?
Yes. Let's see, on the 23rd, excuse me, the 23rd and 24th of September, I attended some training sessions for my engineering license. And some of it was interesting, and some of it was deadly dull, as happens sometimes. I also attended the boardwork session. The Barney Joint Operating Commission was fine. The Joint Water Commission, we discussed some things that didn't go so well. Although the price of chlorine went up again. And we'll have to deal with that at some point in the future. And also, the pumps have what looks like, the new raw water pumps, looks like they have excessive vibration, although I've been told later that the, the pumps actually meet the specifications. So Tom and I will have a discussion of that. The Aloha Business Association meeting was on the 14th of October. And what I can say is that we are handling the COVID-19, the vaccination issues, and the Delta variant much better than anybody else is. Except, with the possible exception of the, the Washington County Sheriff. But we do not have any of the, at least as far as I know, any of the catastrophic failures that other agencies are having. And then there's tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Doan. Next, Commissioner Duggan?
It's been a busy month. On the 16th of September, I attended the Talking Water Customer Emergency Assistance Program's virtual open house. On the 17th of September, I attended the Board Finance Committee meeting that Commissioner Bagnell talked about. On the 18th, I attended the Washington County Town Hall, where the topic was the American Rescue Plan Act priorities for the county, how they're going to spend $58 million in the two different tranches. I learned a new vocabulary word, "trash", means slice or pay, or a part, portion of. On the 23rd and 24th, I also attended the Osbeal's Symposium that Commissioner Doan attended. I didn't find it totally boring. I enjoyed all the presentations, and it was a really easy way to get the acquired continuing education credits to maintain my professional licensure. On the 5th of October, I attended the Board Executive and Work Sessions that Commissioner Bagnell talked about. On the 6th, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board Meeting, which is the regular one-third of a year meeting. On the agenda that night was admitting the city of Scappus to the consortium. They're, they're joining us, they, they really like the conservation and other messaging that is, is part of the media outreach and outreach. the media outreach and outreach to other segments of the, the population that are harder to get to at times. So City Scappus was an enthusiastic joiner to the consortium. Also that night, we, we talked about the strategic plan update for the consortium and had some breakout sessions. On the 7th, I attended the Willamette Water Supply System Board Meeting. And it's a regular monthly board meeting. On the 12th, I attended the Board Agenda Planning Meeting with President Saunders and Tom Hickman. And then tonight's meeting. So yeah, very, very full month. So that's, that's the sum total of my report. Thanks.
And you're retired, you say?
Semi, semi-retired.
Clearly, clearly semi to minor.
Still working for one of our co-providers and partners in water provision. Fortunately, I don't have any responsibilities that overlap with the Water District. And I make it a priority to do so, in my current role too, especially.
Righto. Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. And Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, this is Dick. My report mirrors Bernice's, which is the work session, JWC, and tonight's meeting.
Righto. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. And for myself, I attended the September Talking Water Presentation, the virtual presentation on the Customer Emergency Assistance Program. On the 23rd and the 29th, and then one more time on the 18th, I have been meeting one-on-one with our CEO, Tom Hickman, to kind of catch up with the things that all of my fellow board members already know from their, either their years of experience or their years of employment with TVWD. So Tom's kind of taken it upon himself to, as the board president, to kind of get me up to speed. And I'm grateful for that. On the 5th, I attended the monthly board work session, like the rest of my fellow board members. On the 12th was the Willamette River Water Coalition Meeting, which just as a reminder includes Sherwood, Tigered, Toewallatin, and ourselves. And the primary purpose is really just to maintain open communication between the water right members as we move forward. The meeting again discussed, you know, some of the general aspects of the partnership, the coalition, the website, and things of this nature. But Joel Carey has taken over leadership of those meetings now. Then on the 12th as well, I met with, in the morning of the 12th before the WRWC meeting, I met with Vice President Duggan and the CEO, Tom, to do our board agenda meeting. And then tonight's monthly board meeting as well. All right, very good. Okay. The next item will be topics to be raised by commissioners. And do we have any topics to be raised by commissioners? All right, not hearing any, we will proceed to public comments. And public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items in the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment? Not hearing any. We can proceed then with the consent agenda. And the consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, our consent agenda items are to approve the September 15th, 2021 regular meeting minutes, to approve the October 5th, 2021 work session meetings, to approve the addition of Juneteenth and one floating holiday as an employee benefit, starting 2022, and adopt Resolution 11-21, a resolution approving the application for grant funds through the Bureau of Reclamation for the Water Smart colon Water and Energy Efficiency Grants for fiscal year 2022. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Commissioner Bagnell. I so moved to approve the consent agenda.
This is Jim Dome, I'll second.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bagnell and Commissioner Dome. At this time, I'd like to ask our district recorder to provide the roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dome?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. The next item is today's business agenda, which is to consider adopting Resolution 12-21, which is a resolution adopting revised policies of the Board of Commissioners. And we will have a staff report from Clark Belfour.
Good evening, President Sanders and commissioners. This is a topic that we reviewed in some detail at your work session a couple of weeks ago. What you see before you is a resolution to adopt revised board policies. The revisions are shown in red line. I think the revisions are pretty self-explanatory, although I'll spend a little bit of time just reaffirming that we took Commissioner Bagnell's good suggestions and clarified the support that the district staff would provide from an IT perspective for personally used devices of the commissioners. And so we clarified that and moved a few things around. But other than that, this is exactly what you saw a couple of weeks ago. And unless you have further questions, I won't bore you again with all the details and I'll just leave it to you to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Bagnell. I do just want to recognize that Clark, our chief legal counsel, did a wonderful job incorporating the changes we asked for and an equally wonderful job interpreting what I was talking about with my concerns about the personal, the use of personal devices. It was exactly what I wanted to see.
Well, thank you. It, it took a group effort on our part to make sure that we captured everything that was said. And so I think together, we all got through it. So thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. With that then being said, do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 12-21, a resolution adopting the revised policies of the Board of Commissioners?
This is Commissioner Duggan, so moved.
This is Dick. Second?
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Duggan and Commissioner Schmidt. I'd like to ask our district recorder to provide a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dome?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. Then the motion will pass. Thank you. Our next business agenda item is to consider approving the surplus and disposal of the Cornell Road Water Reservoir, a vehicle referred to as Unit 130, and a piece of equipment referred to as Unit 700. We'll receive a staff report from Matt Oglesby.
Good evening, President Sanders and commissioners. Tonight, I'm seeking board approval to surplus real property, Cornell Road Reservoir, and multiple pieces of equipment listed below with an estimated value over $25,000, which needs your... Let me find. So TVWD owns 0.84 acres of real property on the northeast corner of Cornell Road and Northwest Miller Road. This site has historically been used as a reservoir, but was decommissioned in the last 10 years. A structural engineering report in 2009 provided, provided, determined that the reservoir was in fair condition and, and short-term repairs could maintain the reservoir in fair condition. However, it was not deemed to be structurally resistant to a code level earthquake and an upgrade would not be worth the cost of retrofit. In addition, it was assumed that if a new reservoir were to be placed at that site, it would need to be placed on piles due to the slope instability concerns. Storage capacity in the 820 pressure zone of the West Hills is sufficient to handle anticipated water demands. As a result, the site is no longer deemed necessary or appropriate for water infrastructure and staff does not anticipate needing the site in the future. If the board declares a property surplus, staff is prepared to have the property appraised and listed for sale on, on the open market. Next up is Unit 130. It is a 2013 International Workstar 7600 with a Vector HXX Hydro Excavator on the back. Unit 130 was identified for replacement because of it, it has multiple engine and vacuum related issues. The multiple engine issues led to a class action lawsuit against Navstar International. Currently, the district has two hydro excavators of this size and this vehicle will be sold after a new vehicle has been delivered. This vehicle will be replaced with a model that is more reliable, hopefully. Staff estimates the Unit 130's value to be about $135,000. Next up is Unit 700. This is a 2014 Caterpillar 308 Trackhoe. Currently, there are five Trackhoes in the district's fleet in varied sized configurations. Staff identified the current underutilization of this type of equipment and reviewed expectations for future utilization with operations staff. Staff determined that this vehicle will not be needed in the future, netted within the district's interest to surplus this equipment. Staff estimates Unit 700's value at $38,500. And lastly, kind of a unexpected plus, but Unit 45, a 1999 international dump truck and Unit 119, a 2000 Caterpillar Backhoe, were identified for surplus due to their age, mileage, or hours and utilization. Staff estimated current market value of the dump truck at $18,500 and the Backhoe at $22,500. So no board approval was needed and the CEO approved the surplus. Unexpectedly, both sold for over 25, over the $25,000 limit at the auction, at an online auction this last weekend. The dump, we received $27,500 and the Backhoe $26,700. Staff is asking for retroactive board approval to surplus this equipment. And that's it for me. Any, any questions?
This is Commissioner Dome. I've got comments, no questions. One, I really appreciate getting rid of property that we no longer need, you know, and there's no future use for. I think that's very insightful. It's work that has been undertaken that we really don't have to do at any given time, but we found a way to do it. The second thing is that I'm a stockholder in Navstar International and there's a class action suit because they went through about five years of really engines that didn't meet the EPA standards. And I, I will not be voting on the, because I'm a stockholder, even though I can, but it just seemed a little tacky to do it. So anyway, yeah, it's one of my, not one of my best investments.
Righto. Well, thank you, Commissioner Dome. Matt, does the reservoir come with the land?
Yet to be determined. We're planning on getting it tore down, but we don't know at this point if it's going to be more cost effective just to get rid of it or not, so.
If I can add a comment to that, Matt is spot on. We are, we'll be doing some assessment on what the best value of the land would be. This particular property is kind of in a, somewhat of a busy intersection. So depending on, you know, who might, who, who we might market it to, it might not be worth it for us to demo that particular reservoir. We've got another site that you've already given us authority to surplus. And that site is up in the West Hills area, used to be known as Bonnie Slope Reservoir Site. And that one, we're actually thinking about taking down the reservoir and actually marketing it as a buildable lot. It's, it's a very nice spot and we can, there's some issues associated with the fact that it's not inside the city of Portland and it would cost about $40,000 just to go through the Plan Map Amendment to belong to, to bring it into the city of Portland. But long and the short of it is, we think we can make it work as a buildable lot and that would give us actually more money. So we're going to become a little bit of developers so that we can get as much money as we can for these properties that we have.
Marvelous. Righto. All right. Well, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Carey. At this time, I'll ask the, my fellow commissioners, do I have a motion and a second to approve the surplus and disposal of the Cornell Road Water Reservoir, a vehicle, Unit 130, and a piece of equipment, Unit 700?
This is Commissioner Bagnell. I so moved.
This is Dick. I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagnell. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. I'll ask our district recorder to provide a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, the motion now passes. The next item in this evening's meeting is an informational presentation. And we were gonna, we are going to now receive an informational presentation on the consideration of amendment to the district's rules and regulations for civil penalties for unauthorized work upon or tampering with the district's water system. And we'll receive a staff report from Clark Belfour.
Hello again. So once again, this was a matter that was brought to you at the October work session where we had some discussion. And then our plan would be to bring this back for formal adoption in November and December. But we wanted to have one more discussion with you to, to, so that the public could hear about the, the types of things that we're considering in order to try to stop unauthorized and harmful work or tampering by unauthorized individuals on the water system. and harmful work or tampering by unauthorized individuals on the water system. Andrew is going to advance the slides for me, so Andrew, give it a go. Okay, here we are. We, the proposal was that, as you know, we periodically review and update our rules and regulations, and we have a prohibition on any unauthorized work or tampering, I made a typo there, I'm sorry, with the district water system. So the idea then would be to amend the rules and regulations to include and exhibit with civil penalties that would be assessed. And, you know, what you see there is a typical construction site, one of our hydrants, and there's an attachment that we allow contractors to use to draw water for construction purposes. And we've had some abuses of that, plus some abuses in other situations. Andrew, would you advance the slide? Thank you. So our, our plan here is to move all existing penalties and fines to a new exhibit in our rate resolution, and that's what you have attached to your stat, or the staff report and your agenda packet. And we would cover everything from illegal use of water to illegal use of the fire line, illegal use of hydrants, and then just no tampering that, and that we would have substantial and significant penalties for folks that do improper work or somehow touch our system, including, you won't see it on the exhibit, but in the rules and regulations, we will specifically provide that there will be, if we get to a severe situation, that contractors would just not be permitted to work on the district system or to touch the district system. And, you know, if that doesn't have a deterrent effect on contractors performing work, I'm not sure what does, but, you know, we have to maintain the ability to just say, no, you're just not authorized to work on our system, and they're going to have to deal with that economically. Next slide, Andrew. So, you know, what we, after talking with you and, and getting some further direction, what we're thinking here is that if there's an alteration or manipulation of the system that has no customer impact, then it would be a $5,000 per occurrence civil penalty, plus reimbursement of our time to track it down, enforce it, that sort of thing. And then the other category is, if there's an impact to customers, then it would be $10,000 per occurrence. So we're trying to be, we're trying to be effective and enforce in a manner that speaks to people in their pocketbooks. And then we also have additional infractions which are listed on the exhibit. Next slide, Andrew.
That's all the slides, Clark.
Okay. I thought we, I thought we had one more, which was going to be another picture, which, you know, showed another situation where someone was wrongfully accessing one of our hydrants for construction purposes, didn't have a permit, wasn't authorized in any way, and on top of that, they didn't have the backflow prevention devices that we require our contractors to have. So, you know, it was just going to be another example of, of what we've seen out in the field, but I think it's, I think you have the idea. So I think our ask of you tonight is, does this seem to be in the correct direction, and is this what you want us to bring back next month? Oh, you know, there was, there was also another slide, I'm sorry. I'm looking at Debbie's note in the photo, and yes, that is one photo. We also had a second photo this morning that I, I tried to put in, and apparently I failed. So once again, now you know why Andrew is advancing the slides, and, and I'm just talking. So it was, you didn't, there was another visual aid, and as a result of my ineptitude, you don't get to see it, so sorry.
I'll take all the blame for the presentation here, including the misspelling words and whatnot. We were, I just lost my days this week, and I was late getting this over to Debbie, and some things got missed. But, but Clark did more than ample job of describing what we're trying to do here. And, and, you know, our, I guess what we're looking for is, you know, are we hurting folks enough with $5,000 and $10,000 fines such that it gives them disincentive to mess with our system? So.
This is Commissioner Dome. I would like to see this thing automatically indexed with inflation.
Good.
If that's possible.
It is.
Yeah, I, this is Commissioner Bagnell. I would second Commissioner Dome's thoughts on that. I, 5,000 and 10,000 sound like sufficient deterrents to me, but you don't want it to get to be just a little part of the cost of business. It has to keep going up.
Yep. Okay.
This is Commissioner Duggan. I have a friendly amendment to make to that, is that the index to inflation be in $100 increments, so we don't have weird fractions of a penalty. So if inflation increases enough to get to even $100 amounts, then it'd jump up to the next level, or however staff wants to do rounding, however that, that works out. But I think having the fines be in even $100 increments would probably keep it up and not be too onerous to, or crazy-looking if our fines down to the penny, so to speak.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Duggan. That's a really good clarification, because these should look like fines, and they should be in round numbers. And I, I absolutely agree that if you get it down to, as Paul would say, decimal dust, or too much of a granular level, it starts implying a level of precision that isn't there. It's a fine.
And I'll just ask one question, Carey and Clark. We had talked about stop work as well.
Right. And so I went over that very quickly. I should have circled back. And I'm going to put that in the actual body of the rules and regulations themselves. I mean, we can add it to the exhibit here, but I wanted to have it in the, in the actual body of the ordinance itself. So that's where I planned to put that in. But it doesn't hurt to add it to this exhibit as well, so we cover it in both places. So it's no problem to add.
Great. Thank you. We have no action to take on this item tonight, so I'll just say thank you both to Clark and to Carey for that information. Unless there is any other business before us, which I'm not aware of any, there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.